Good evening. I will call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for December 7th at 6:25. First up is approval of the minutes. Number one, Licensing Board Regular Minutes of November 9th.
I will make a motion to approve.
Now, second, a discussion of corrections. Seeing none, all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then on to our agenda items for consideration. Number two, Reserve Class B Combination License for Old Fashioned Foods, Inc., Old Fashioned Cheese, 408 South Main Street.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then number three, Class B Beer, Class C Wine License for Skinny Vix LLC, Skinny Vix Diner and Coffee Stop at 804 West Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion on that one? Seeing none, all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those both pass, and I will adjourn the, sorry, seeing no further business for the Licensing Board, I will adjourn. And then I will call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for December 7th at 6:30. Notice that all aldermen are present and accounted for. We ask those in the audience and those of the council to rise for the posting of the colors. Thank you so much. If the council and audience will allow me, before we get started, I did want to acknowledge the passing of Alderman and Council President Steve Hugesther. Steve was a dedicated civil servant from beginning to end, and served our community in many fashions as a West Bend Police Officer, Alderman, Council President, and past Acting Mayor. The entire city of West Bend sharing the grief and condolences with the Hugesther family, and we of course send our love and deepest sympathies to them. If those in the audience and the council could please join me for a brief moment of silence for our friend, Steve Hugesther. Thank you so much in joining me for that. And with that, I will recess the Common Council to Public Works.
I would like to call the Board of Public Works to order. I have three items on the agenda. First, the approval of the minutes for November 9th.
Motion to approve.
Are there any discussions or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number one, relocation order for 18th Avenue Reconstruction, Paradise to Vote Drive. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This relocation order that we bring to you tonight is one of the steps for real estate acquisition as part of this project. In order for the project to be built, we will need to get right-of-way or easement from properties along 18th Avenue. And those lands are identified on the attached plat, and we're asking council and the Board of Public Works tonight to adopt the relocation order in order to, for our consultant to be able to approach the property owners and start negotiation for the land acquisition for the project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max?
I have.
Alderman, Berquist.
Mr. Chairman, based on my position with the Board of Trustees at the Washington County Memorial Park, the cemetery there at 18th and Paradise, I'll be recusing myself from any discussion.
Okay, Alderman, Donick.
Max, does any of this come as a surprise to any of the property owners?
The property owners received a letter that was mailed to them November 13, letting them know that the process will start. And then our consultant was placing stakes on the property to identify, you know, the limits of the land that the city was looking to acquire. However, we could not approach the property owners yet or start negotiations because we have to go through this step first. And then having the state also approve the funding, because they are funding part of that land acquisition. So even though we are not really supposed to approach the property owners yet, we did make them aware that this was coming, and they would have seen our survey crews on their property and everything like that. So yes, they've been made aware of this.
Are there any other questions?
How has the response kind of been?
We haven't gotten a response to this correspondence. What we have done before a couple times this year, earlier this year, and then I believe later in August, is that we had sent all the property owners documentation, because we could not hold a public meeting, a public, to involve everybody because of COVID and everything. So what we did is that we sent them the preliminary plans, and we sent them letters explaining the projects. And then we did get questions at that time, and which we answered the property owners. But just for the relocation, we haven't gotten anything yet. Obviously, when our real estate negotiator will start visiting with them and talking with them, then they'll probably have questions specifically about that.
What, I did read this, but what is the largest right-of-way we're asking for from someone? How many feet in?
I don't know that by heart, but it's somewhere on the plat. It's gonna be either, there are, I can tell you which properties we're asking. There are the cemetery where we're asking for .4 acres. And then there's a few other properties, one, two, three more properties. There's two that are at .3 and .39, so another .4 acres. And the last one is at .06, about .058. So those four properties that we're asking for right-of-way, actually, I'm sorry, there are two more, but they're also at .058 or .038. So the largest would be the cemetery with .401 acres for right-of-way. And now after that, we have the easements as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Sorry, aye, approved.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number two, thank you, Max. Item number two, Award Contract 20-18 Tree Surety. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. All right, Tree Surety Contract. This contract includes a planting of 306 street trees within seven subdivisions, various free street tree locations, and along the 18th Avenue Street Tree Demonstration. Our department went out for bid, and we received two bids for this project, which is not unusual. We are requesting this evening awarding Contract 20-18 to Dan Larson Landscape for the base bid of $70,113, with the option of awarding the Ad Alternate 1 for possibly hand-digging some of the holes, and the option of awarding the Ad Alternate 2, which is additional watering cycles during the summertime. Both of those Ad-Alternates are not guarantees. It depends on, for the hand-digging, the buried utilities, and the additional watering cycles, how much natural irrigation we will get during the summer. We have a 14-window irrigation window for the base bid. We always try to budget for the additional irrigation cycles throughout the summer, so that's the second Ad-Alternate. The total contract with both Ad-Alternates and a 3% contingency is $87,344. This project is expected to begin in the spring of 2021. We have worked with Dan Larson Landscaping over the last several years, and we've had nothing but total success with them and their organization. This project will be funded from five different sources. The Tree Surety portion of the project will be funded from that holding account, holding account specifically for Tree Surety. The trees that are part of the Emerald Ashbore Response and Free Street Tree Program will be paid for out of capital monies designated for the program for 2021, and funds carried forward from capital monies designed for this program in 2022, or 2020, rather. An urban forestry grant has been awarded to the city for 2021. And we have an account designated for the Free Street Tree and Emerald Ashbore Response Plan that is a combination of donations and firewood sales. So again, the Tree Surety trees get paid for out of the Tree Surety Contract. The capital money covers the Free Street Tree Programs, and then we have some of the donated funds for like the 18th Avenue Street Tree, and we also have the grant funding available. So a little bit from five different accounts to cover the cost for the full contract. So thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman, Model?
Is this a combination of EAB and just regular?
This is all of our street tree planting. So Tree Surety, again, is new residential development, or depend, for next year, it's all new residential development. If there was some business development there, we could include that in there. It's free street trees, so we went through, cut down all the, Villa Parks are a good example. We took out all the trees two, three years ago. We took out the stumps. Now we're ready for planting. Deer Ridge, the same thing. So a lot of the Emerald Ashbore Response. This may be the last big planting contract, the 306 trees. That's a, that's a big-sized contract. Hopefully, because all our ash trees are gone, the stumps are gone, that number will start going down a little bit year to year, so.
That answered my next question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike, I just have one question. Just, again, these street trees that are being put out are going to be various species. They're not going to be the same?
Diversity is key. I think West Bend is not unique. When it came to Emerald Ashbore, 33% of our street trees were ash. Why? Because honestly, 20 years ago, John, they didn't have the varieties we do nowadays, and diversity is key for us. We are looking at no more than 7% to 10% of our street trees, one cultivar of a tree. So we are being as diverse as we possibly can. And I know a lot of people like maple trees, but once we took all the ash trees out, 47% of our street trees are maple. So are we replanting with maples? We are some of them, not very many. We don't want our age class of maples to be all 30, 40, 50 years old, and they all go at one time, and we need to replant. But we like maples too. We also like lindens and elm trees and everything else we can get out there. So yes, diversity is key when we're replanting.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Permission to Bid Eisenbaum State Trail Crack and Seal Coat Contract. Mike, good evening.
Thank you, sir. Our department is requesting permission to advertise for seal coating and crack sealing on the Eisenbaum State Trail. This would be a 2021 project. We are hoping that we can get good bids on this now by bidding this work out now, and contractors can get on our schedule for next year. This work will include cleaning, crack sealing, and seal coating, the trail, and also traffic control when the contractor's out there doing the work. We are looking at scheduling the crack sealing in the spring and the seal coating, then in the fall, trying to keep that summer window open. Our goal for 2020 was to do this work in 2020. With COVID kind of closing everything else down in March, April, May, the Eisenbaum State Trail was a pedestrian highway this summer, which is great, as we like to see. So that's why we postponed this work until 2021. Will there be trail users? Yes. Will there be interruptions? Yes. But that's why we're trying to break this apart and do the springtime crack sealing and in the fall of 2021, do the seal coating itself. So we're hoping that bidding this out now, we should get some good prices for it. Funding for this project, the project is estimated, the contract is, we're looking at about a $50,000 contract. The city did receive a stewardship grant in 2019 for $25,087.55 for this work. Also, the city, we have carried over some CIP money of about, of $25,000 to help cover the other percentage or other half of the contract. So some grant money and some capital money to maintain Eisenbaum Trail. That is what we are looking at. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Yes, Alderman, Model?
Yeah, Mike, is that 50,000, is that estimate based on past experiences with that?
Cindy Lyons, our project manager, has worked with technical engineering to put the cost estimates together. So that's where we are getting those from.
Great, thanks, man.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. There being no further business to Board of Public Works. Your turn.
All right, I will now call to order the Meeting of Finance. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 9th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Then we will move on to the items for consideration. We have the disallowance of a claim for Derek Kozelinski. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on that. Can Michelle speak if anyone does, otherwise I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to deny the claim.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of denying the claim?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, one opposed? All right, that passes. Number three is the resolution to accept donations to the Park, Rec, and Forestry Department, and Mike Yentch is going to speak with us about that.
Thank you. This evening, we are presenting with, we are presenting you with several very impressive donations. The first donation is $1,100 from the West Bend Friends of Parks Recreation for the sponsorship of our youth football league and the virtual 5K, 10K that we held this spring. The next donation is for $240 from Blue Luna Yoga and Wellness for our recreational programming. The third donation is for $12,500 from We Energies Foundation Incorporated for the development of the Riverwalk, Riverwalk West Project. The next donation is $4,300 from various donors for the Universal Inclusive Playground. The next donation is from the West Bend Economic Development Corporation for the Riverwalk West Reconstruction. This is a very impressive donation of $250,000. And the last donation is for $7,500 from Horicon Bank for the July 4th, 2020 fireworks that we were able to hold at Riverside Park. We would like to thank all the individuals, organizations, and companies that support our park and recreation activities and the city of West Bend. This is a very impressive list. We, we want to just say thank you to each and every one of them. Thank you.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Great. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and a big thank you to all of our donors.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four is the Extended Emergency Responder Sick Leave, and I believe Michelle is going to talk to us about that.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. As you know, last April, we came before you and approved due to COVID, we put through the Families First Coronavirus Policy, and with that, we had the Emergency Responder Sick Pay. We're looking right now to extend the Emergency Responder Sick Pay into 2021, not give additional time, just extend it. So those that haven't used it, because obviously COVID's still rampant, but those that potentially will need it, we figure at least until June, potentially give us a little bit of wiggle room, but we're looking to extend that timeframe. And then we'll talk to the unions and the emergency responder unions and put in a memorandum of understanding with them, but we're looking at just extending that part right at this moment. So included the memo, what the sick policy looked like, so you can see it, and basically just changing the dates to be June of 2021, end of June. Nothing more type. Any questions?
Captain Lee moved to extend the sick leave policy.
Second.
Great, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And then the last item on the agenda is going to be a resolution for Wisconsin Travel Stimulus Grant Funds, and I believe Jess is going to talk to us about that. Hi.
Hi, thank you. This is a resolution to accept $12,000 from the Wisconsin Travel Stimulus Grant Program. It's for the reimbursement of tourism promotion expenses incurred from a special marketing communications campaign designed to support small businesses in the Downtown Business Improvement District as a response to COVID-19. The six-month campaign was administered by the City of West Bend Communications Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that motion carries. And with no further business, I will adjourn the Meeting of Finance.
Thank you. Good evening again. I will resume the Common Council Meeting. Note that we have 27 items on our agenda, first being approval of the minutes, approval of the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for November 9th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Model and Allen. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we'll move on to Consent Agenda, pulling out item number four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Kennedy, second by Allen. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we'll take up item number four, which is a relocation order for 18th Avenue Reconstruction, Paradise to Vote, with Alderman, Berquist abstaining.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Butch look, and I'll give that one to Donick. Any questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to agenda items for consideration. Item number 10 is a proclamation declaring Clara Moll Day in the city of West Bend. I'll ask for a motion on this first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Model, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I will read that proclamation. This states, whereas West Bend resident Clara Moll is turning 110 years old, I'll say that again, 110 years old, on Saturday, December 19th, 2020, and whereas Clara was born in Mountain View, Missouri, on December 19th, 1910, the 11th of 12 children, and she moved to Wisconsin to live with her godmother after her parents passed at a young age, and whereas Clara attended St. Mary's Catholic School and Badger High School, and she worked for various West Bend companies, Clara married Eloise Mull and had three children, Mary, Al, and Jackie. Clara still resides in her home on Salisbury Road in the Barton area of West Bend. And whereas Clara is known to be hardworking, kind, happy, and welcoming to visitors, she enjoys gardening, baking, dancing, and roller skating. Whereas, now therefore I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Saturday, December 19th, 2020, to be Clara Moll Day in the city of West Bend, and acknowledge that the Historic Barton Business Association will honor Clara on Saturday, December 19th at noon. And I believe Alderman, Model's going to tell us a little bit more about that.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Jenkins and the council for doing this proclamation, and also just to let everyone know that we are doing a drive-by, walk-by type parade on December 9th at noon. Great.
Good stuff. Happy, happy birthday. And I will move on to item number 11, the W.C. CARES Election Subgrant Resolution, and our city administrator, Jay Shambos, is going to speak on that.
You have the resolution in your packet. This is some CARES money that came in through the Elections Commission to offset the additional costs that we had within all of the elections this year. With the 20, just over 20,000 that we received through CARES and the actual expenses for all the elections, we came in about $1,000 off, so just $1,000 over in expenditures than, than revenue according to our budget, and this $20,000. So without it, we would have been significantly over in the budget for 2020, and thankfully, this helped cover a big chunk of it. Lots of absentee mails, mailings, and postage, additional costs with labor due to the significant in-person absentee and mail-in absentee ballots that were received.
Absolutely. I'll look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Donick, any discussion or questions for Jay? Yes, sir.
I would just like to comment about Stephanie and her crew. I did think they did a fantastic job this year with all of what was going on, mailing, virus, no problems whatsoever, and compliments to Stephanie for doing an outstanding job as well as her crew.
Amen. I'll second that. Thank you.
Jay, just a really quick question. Is this money from the state of Wisconsin, the WEA?
Yep, it's, so it's federal money passed through the state.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, then I'll call for vote. To all those in favor of accepting the resolution, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to item number 12, a resolution amending the traffic manual for the city of West Bend, and we have Captain Daring speaking to us on that.
Good evening. Chief sends his regrets he couldn't be here tonight, and I wanted to say I sincerely appreciated you honoring Lieutenant Hugesther tonight, so thank you for that. We have four, three that we're bringing in front. The Safety Commission met August 5th, 2020, consultation with the Engineering Department, citizens in the area. The first is the inclusion of some traffic signals at East Washington Street at Shane Har. That's the result of the QuickTrip that's going in construction. I believe vetted out through the Planning Commission. Engineering was tabled once, came back for discussion, and the commission is now voting to approve, mainly to facilitate access in and out of QuickTrip. The second section, reducing 25 mile an hour speed limit on Scenic Drive West is a response to Morris Honda, increased traffic in several driveways in the area that were a concern for entering and exit. We'll be coupling that 25 mile an hour reduction with some warning signs about driveways ahead, safety in the area. And the third, very simple parking restrictions, just to include, increase the line of sight, some traffic safety concerns with entering and exit off of the side streets on Barton and the alleyway on Hickory. Heard from several citizens in the area, most were in favor of these changes.
Sounds great. I will ask for a motion first.
Motion to amend.
Wow. Let's see, who hasn't gotten one for a while? Ah, Berquist, we'll give that to you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to item number 13, a resolution levying special assessments for the 2021 Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District. This is just our regular special assessments that we do every year, but Jess is here if we have any questions. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Go with Donick and Allen. Any questions for Jess or discussion? Looks like you're off the hook. All those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And moving on to item number 14, proposed ordinance change for municipal code 20.02 para 21, Weapons in City Parks. Mike, go ahead.
Sounds good. Thank you. Our current park ordinance, Parks 20.0221 Weapons, is not consistent with state statute and needs to be updated. As the current, as the ordinance is currently written, this ordinance is unenforceable. Our current ordinance does not allow an individual the ability to carry a gun in a city park. This is more restrictive than a state statute. This ordinance proposal This ordinance proposal was reviewed by the city attorney and the police department. And this proposed ordinance that is before you this evening was also approved by the Park and Recreation Commission on November 19th of this year. The proposed ordinance and state statute does do allow an individual to open and concealed carry a gun in a city park. The new ordinance makes that pretty much black and white that we will be aligning with state statute that someone can open and concealed carry a weapon, a gun, a gun in a city park. Some of the other weapons that are noted in the ordinance are still being restricted. This does not allow anyone to discharge that weapon in that park. In the new ordinance, it does give the Park and Rec Commission the authority to allow the discharge of a weapon in a park. An example of that would be our archery range, our archery recreational programs that we have, or the deer abatement program that we've done now on annual basis. So the Park and Rec Commission still has the authority to allow the discharge of a weapon or a gun in a city park. So if, and again, Captain Deering is here, the city attorney is here. If there's something really specific, I can't answer. And I don't want to get into a real big discussion on concealed carry and open carry and all that, because that is not part of this ordinance. But someone can open carry and concealed carry. And if you do take that responsibility on yourself, we would ask that you understand what you are doing and the laws that govern what you are doing. Example, school zones. Ziegler Park is really close. It's next door to Decorum Elementary School. Someone takes it upon themselves to be responsible. They want to open or conceal carry, they are still responsible to following all the rules and guidelines and laws relating to that. So the proposed ordinance is basically, we're cleaning up our ordinance. We need to align with state statute. We need to allow someone to carry a gun in a city park. But some of the other weapons that are noted are still restricted, and discharging of those weapons are not allowed unless the Park and Rec Commission has given you the authority, or us authority, you know, for a program or whatever it might be. So with that being said, I will try and answer any and all questions. Ian's here. Captain Deering's here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yep.
Just want to comment that I realize a few of the, especially paragraph C, is a slightly convoluted paragraph. The reason for that is I pulled language directly from the statute to make sure that it complied. I looked at it and was like, nope, I'm not going to mess with it. I don't want it to be misinterpreted. So most of that is directly adapted from the statute, which is why it's kind of weirdly written. And in case people find it confusing. So.
Got it. I'll be asking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Berquist and Kaler. Any discussion or questions? Yes, sir.
In some paragraph C, the convoluted paragraph, it mentions firearm or knife. And so knives are also allowed in parks?
Knives are governed by concealed carry, the concealed carry statute. So they would be governed by the exemption.
This would be fixed blade knives or?
Yeah, I mean, if it's covered under the concealed carry statutes. Yeah, it would be covered under this.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's fair to say it's any knife. I think they've even allowed switch blades now, right?
I'm not positive, but I believe, yes.
So it's any, any knife. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the ordinance change, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much. On to item number 15, disallowance of claim for Derek Kazlowski. And again, we're looking for a motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Model. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item number 16. Ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the city of West Bend, Wisconsin, for a change in the recommended land use from industrial to multifamily and institutional for approximately 15.1 acres of land located at 285 Sand Drive by John Meyer of GJM Enterprises LLC. And we have our business development planner here, Jim Ranky. Take it away.
Good evening. Tonight, we're asking the council to consider a land use change for 15.1 acres on Sand Drive. The land use change is composed of changing the current land use of industrial over to multifamily and institutional. The property is up for sale. The owner has a willing buyer. And in order to redevelop that property, the land use needs to change from the industrial use to an institutional and multifamily use for that redevelopment of that property. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval of the land use.
Thank you so much.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Alan, who is the second? Sorry. Kaler, thank you. Any discussion or questions? Alderman Dolnick and then Alan.
This is my district, and I'm also one of the aldermen on the Plan Commission. So I've been dealing with this. I'm going to vote for this tonight because the Plan Commission did approve it. I had recommended denial based upon issues with the concept plan. It appears that the commission will probably deal with that when a formal site plan has been submitted, which will be the next step for the Plan Commission and for the development. But, so I'm just pointing out why I'm voting for this now in case any of my constituents are watching, because I think that this is pretty much settled due to the Plan Commission's decision.
Thank you. Alderman.
Yeah. Jim, the area in orange on this site plan map, it would be the southeastern corner of the property, that L shape. That's the developable portion of the property or?
No, under the land use, so that brownish orangish color is the designation for the multifamily use.
Uh huh.
And then that blue area is the designation for the institutional use. And then that far northwestern portion, that green area, that's an environmental area. So it's nonshoreland wetland, so that wouldn't be developed. But the blue and the brown area would be the development area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I will go with Model and Kennedy.
From a surrounding neighborhood standpoint, it's likely that this land use change is probably better for the neighborhood as far as they would be concerned. I know that's asking you for an opinion, but getting out of industrial kind of.
Correct. It's an alternative use for that, moving it away from that heavy industrial use to a more of a residential, you know, quieter type use.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, my question was kind of similar to that, was even Jed. How many people were interested at the hearing that came from the neighborhood? And what were some of the concerns that you said in originally you were kind of on the fence? And now you're positive. I just am wondering if there's anything we should be considering.
Well, overall, overall, the neighborhood would prefer to see it developed this way.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's some concerns from property owners immediately adjacent to it over position of the buildings, some of the buildings. And so that's why the site plan will have to be looked at. But, I mean, the neighborhood has been very non-contentious about this overall, really. Some concerns about traffic, but that'll be settled again at Plan Commission with a traffic impact analysis, so.
Thank you.
There will be opportunity for scrutiny later on.
Oh, yes.
Correct. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. To all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to item number 17. Ordinance to rezone approximately 15.1 acres of land located at 285 Sand Drive from M2 Heavy Industrial District and NSW Nonshore Wetland to RM4 Multifamily Residential District, I1 Institutional and Public Service District, and NSW Nonshoreland Wetland District. Anything else, Jim?
No, this is the actual ordinance to establish that zoning for the multifamily and institutional use.
Sounds good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Model. Any other discussion on this? Thank you. Then all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks so much. And then number 18, ordinance to rezone approximately 0.4 acres of land located approximately 150 feet east of Westminster Court on the north side of Hawthorne Drive, from RS4 Single Family Residential District to RS3 Single Family Residential District by Nick Didier. Jim?
So this ordinance that we're asking for consideration is to rezone a portion of property from RS4 to RS3. The reason for this is just to clean up some of the zoning that we have out there. We did a certified survey map, and as part of that, the two parcels had two different zonings. So in order to complete the certified survey map, we have to rezone a portion of the lot to the RS3, which would be consistent with the rest of the subdivision surrounding it.
Thanks so much. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Jim? Otherwise, all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks so much. And that passed. Thank you, Jim. And move on to item number 19, appointment of Ken Collins to the Downtown Bid Board. I know many of us know Ken from his work down there associated with his John Maxwell certification and the soft skills training that he does. I had the opportunity to talk with him. He's really interested in getting involved in our downtown. Has a lot of good ideas. I just think he'd be a great addition. And this would be replacing the current vacancy on that board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Model. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Collins, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you for Mr. Collins for stepping up. Move on to reports. Item number 20, a report by Alderman Model regarding the Community TV Committee Meeting. Take it away.
Thank you. Okay, so despite some major technical difficulties, we managed to do a Zoom meeting. We welcomed new communications manager Nicole Bell. We reviewed the third quarter metric report, which presented substantial growth in social media network followers. Several new businesses welcomed posts generated the most engagement. The communications department completed a six-month marketing campaign for the Downtown Business Improvement District, which I believe that went very well, to increase the awareness and drive business to the downtown area. We continued to offer support in virtual platforms during the pandemic, live streaming, graduation ceremonies, football games, and special events. And they did do a couple of extra light commercials involving local businesses outside of downtown as well, which is very helpful. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Model?
Shouldn't the communications group really understand communications?
What's that?
You shouldn't highlight the fact that you can't get a Zoom meeting.
Oh, I know. I know. He's, yeah. Ironic.
All right. Move on to item number 21, a report also by Alderman Model regarding the Downtown Bid Board Meeting.
Okay, great. We received a final report from Jess on the six-month marketing campaign that she's been doing. The communications department took on to promote the bid during the pandemic. The campaign included the production of three promotional videos and digital advertising and a partnership with Travel Wisconsin. The communications department was awarded a $12,000 grant from the Wisconsin Department of Tourism to reimburse much of the cost of the bid campaign, which is something that Jess just kind of went after herself, which is kind of cool. The board also reviewed the bylaws in advance of the January Board Officer Election, which kind of left us sort of where we were at before. So I don't anticipate much change there.
Okay. I do have a question for you on the ad campaign. What were the metrics that were used to determine success or not? Maybe Jess could speak to that.
So I presented, and it's in the bid agenda packet, but I'm happy to distribute it to the common council. It is available online. We, if you have a moment, I can just pull it up for a second. But we reported on social media engagement, impressions, reach, new followers to our network. So we grew our followership over 1,300 just in response to specific ads, and then over 3,000 on Facebook during that six-month time. So we had a number of metrics that we reported on throughout the campaign. We did a three-phased approach to that campaign that sort of aligned with what was happening with the pandemic and the opening and adjustments in various, I guess, government mandates that would affect businesses. So we reported throughout that process three times and at the end.
Yeah, West Bend's social media presence has just blown up in the last six months, year, two years. Three years that I've been here, for sure, it's a lot more now than it was before, so.
I know it's interesting. It can be difficult to connect, you know, that activity to actual dollars spent. But when you check it out, you're right, Alderman Model, that activity is lighting up and people are commenting and sharing pictures and all that stuff. So that's pretty exciting to see.
Yeah, it's very interactive and very cost efficient, very effective. We also generated several leads, so people are able to opt in to learning more about the bid. They provided us with their contact information. We created a landing page. We also created personalized email communication that went out to each of them that shared more information about small businesses, restaurants, cultural attractions, and activities happening in the downtown. We were able to also track all of that activity as well, and we'll continue to cultivate that audience moving forward.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item number 22, a report by Alderman Kaler regarding the Tourism Commission Meeting.
That will actually.
Oh, that's you. Okay.
Alderman Kaler was excused from the meeting. As much as I'd like to see him struggle and give a report. We met on October 13th. This was a meeting that we pulled together to want to have a better idea of the funds that we had available to allocate, because certainly the revenues were down from previous years. And also, several of the organizations weren't ready to present at the previous meeting. So we heard presentations from Historic West Bend Theater, the Museum of Wisconsin Art, the West Bend Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Washington County Convention and Business and Visitors Bureau. We then allocated lesser amounts than they had received in previous years. And there was no historical basis for the Historic West Bend Theater, which I think is now called the Bend. And so they came on as a new recipient of tourist commission dollars. And then we set our next meeting for, I want to say March 15th at 5:15, but I'm going to have to check with Jess because that turns out to be a Monday of a council meeting. And I don't think we would want to do them that way. But are there any questions?
All right. Thanks so much for your part.
Thank you.
Go to, I'm sorry, item number 23, a report by Alderman Berquist regarding the Library Board Meeting.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on November 17th. After dealing with the business of the board, the agendas and the financial reports, one thing I noted, being the new guy on the board and the youngest guy on the board, we do have a section in our meeting that's open for public comment. And since I've been on the board, I don't think anybody has ever spoken during that public comments phase. So again, my comment to the community as a whole is if you have issues with the library or how it's operated and stuff, you do have a public forum in which to voice your opinion. So that's there for you. The library director provided a report. We are a member of the Monarch Library System. And this fall, they conducted a ad campaign. I'd like to report, or I'm happy to report that card registration had gone up during that time. Digital resource use increased, so that's good in this time of COVID. The only problem is, obviously, physical attendance dropped. But that's, again, to be expected. The library director, acting director, reviewed the statistics for 2018 and 2019 and actually showed that library usage was actually increasing and was looking very positive until, of course. course, this happened. He'd like to think that this is going to be just a bump in the road, and hopefully we get back on track and still follow that increase in usage and providing that service to the public. One of the other things that he's involved in is the search for a new director. As of the meeting, there were 20 applicants for that position. 20 applicants. That's really good. Search committee is formed and is in the process of whittling that 20 applications down to a manageable number. I think it's five, and that meeting should be held tomorrow. Let's see. We talked about the budget update. The board would like to thank the city staff who assisted in the preparation of the, of the library's budget and any help that they gave us in making that happen. They really appreciated your help. We approved the library board meeting dates for next year. We also talked about the contingency plan that the library has taken on. Some of the staff there looked at some of the things that might be going on with possible increases in COVID activity and things like that, and are being proactive in addressing that as far as things like curbside service and limited hours and things like that, just to have a plan in place in case something does come out. They briefed on that and looked at following up on that at a later date. Okay? And that included minimum staffing to provide in-person service. We looked at bylaws, briefing on the bylaws. We do have some concern about if we have to meet outside of in-person, that we have the ability to make decisions and have votes based on that electronic approval process. We adjourned the meeting with the next meeting scheduled for December 15th.
Any questions? And I'll, I'll just comment, as a member of that board for almost 10 years, I think that public comment is, is kind of a trend. But I'll open up if there's any comments or questions for Alderman Berquist. Thank you. And we'll move on to item number 24, a report by Alderman Kennedy regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Yeah, we met on November 19th for Parks and Rec. We discussed a memo of understanding between the Parks Department and the library, basically kind of looking at who's responsible for what aspects of the shared basement, rec space, parks and library, how that's going to shake out. The Parks Department, Mike Yench, his team felt really good about that, so good to hear. We talked through the weapons ordinance, which obviously we just discussed tonight. And then lastly, they're, they will be installing, or the Labyrinth Garden Club has asked to install a deer fence around their garden. It's going to be like an eight-foot-tall wrought iron kind of fence with flat caps. It's going to be funded by the garden club as deer damage to their garden unfortunately keeps happening. And then kind of a couple shameless plugs. Regner Enchantment in the park is happening, so take your family, go, go through and do a drive. Snowshoe Friday has begun, begun at Lac Leron. It's free, so we're just kind of waiting for some snow. And then they have the Lac Leron Luminary Walk coming up next month, January 23rd, from 5 to 7, which is also free to the public to enjoy. So that is all.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Kennedy? Otherwise, I'll go to item number 25, a report by Alderman Dolnick regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
Plan Commission met on December 1st. Much of the meeting was devoted to that Sand Drive development that we had tonight. There were a couple of neighborhood, or rather, major home occupation conditional use permits. Lady on Lenora Drive who is going to open a hair salon out of her home, and a lady on Sherwood Place who is opening a home occupation for facials and body waxing. We granted a conditional use permit for filling grading and construction of Trails End, and granted permission for an extra-large sign in front of the new Dairy Queen. So it was fairly routine.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Dolnick? Otherwise, we'll move on to item number 26, closed session. Entertaining motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, Para 1, Para E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing, purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is on the Trails Edge Developers Agreement. Yes?
Don't move.
Second.
Alan and Model, and Megan, if we could have a roll call.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kaler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Thank you. And for those who are watching or in the audience, we will be reconvening into open session shortly.